Welcome. Oh, we already have agendas, Mrs. Bartholomew. Oh, okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Troy City Council meeting for February 28, 2011. This evening, we're going to have our Mayor Pro Tem, Mary Kirwin, provide us with an invocation, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Lord, make us an instrument of peace. Where there is hatred, let us so love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; and where there is sadness, joy. Grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love; for it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Kirwin. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling.
Here.
Councilmember Beltrameen.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Howrak. Kirwin.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Quorum present.
Mayor.
Councilman Fleming?
Yes, Mayor. I'll move to excuse Councilman Howrak from this meeting due to being out of the county.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Beltrameen, that we excuse Councilman Martin Howrak for being out of the county. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirwin?
As usual, I'll be voting no. It has nothing to do with whoever's absent. It's just my belief that we shouldn't really be doing this, that the record should simply indicate who is here and who is absent. But I wish Martin well, with his family.
Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling.
No.
Councilmember Beltrameen.
Yes.
Fleming.
Yes.
Kirwin.
No.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have certificates of recognition and special presentations, and this evening we're -- we have with us our state representative Marty Nolenberg, who's going to give us a legislative update, and so I'll call him forward at this time. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate being here. Thank you, Council. I haven't been here since before the election, and I think what I tried to do at the first part of the year is just kind of give you an update about what I think is going to happen coming forward. As most of you know, a lot of changes since the last time I was here. We now have a new governor, a new legislature, a new Supreme Court, new Attorney General, new Secretary of State, a lot of changes, a lot of new people. In fact, in the legislature itself, there's 67 first-term members, 38 first-termers in the House of Representatives, and 29 first-termers in the Senate. Despite all of that, a lot is really happening. There's an energy that I haven't seen since I've been to Lansing four years ago. Committees are meeting, and meeting earlier than they've ever met. Bills are being introduced, being debated, and have been voted out earlier than I've ever seen. In addition, the governor's come out with his State of the State address a week earlier than ever before, at least in the eight years, four years I've been in the legislature and many, many years before that. In addition, the governor came out with his budget proposal, a good 30 days than what I have seen in the last four years. So, a lot is happening. Real briefly, just so you know, I'm term limited. This is my last time that I can run. I'm currently chairing the Banking and Financial Services Committee. I'm also on the Commerce Committee. I'm also on the Redistricting Committee. There's a number of things I'd like to talk about. I can't talk about them all, and so I want to briefly update you on a budget workshop that I'm having end of March. We think it's going to be the last Thursday in March. We need to confirm the room, but hopefully some of the things I talk about, we can get into more detail of that. There's a lot that's happening. I'd like -- I'm going to talk about the budget, obviously, PA 312, Emergency Managers, Shopping Reform Modernization Act, Leave Time Bill, Step Increase Bills. There's a lot going on here. I can't promise you I can get to it all. But let's start with the budget that Snyder introduced about a week and a half ago, and keeping in mind that Michigan, you know, leaves the nation in the unemployment rate. It's, I think it's 47 or 48 in terms of being on the wrong end of things. It certainly has had a huge impact on our budget, and we're faced with a $1.8 billion budget deficit if you include the school aid fund and also the Michigan General Fund. You know, Snyder's come out and said, you know, there's going to be some short-term pain for a long-term gain. I mean, he campaigned on that theme. He said it in his State of the State address. He also said it in his budget. He talked about value for money, talked about measuring, his dashboard system, making government accountable, transparent. These are all things that I think you're going to see from this legislature, something that we haven't had in a long time. Snyder talked about jobs. If we want to get out of this budget deficit, we need jobs in this state. That's been his number-one priority, going back to the days that he campaigned, and I'm sure most of you here campaigned on jobs as well. It's still an important issue. We've lost a lot of jobs. One of the things that I have mentioned here before is the multi-year budgeting concept. I know you guys have been doing it here. The county has been doing it as well. Michigan finally is going to adopt the same type of program. The budget's a little bit different in that the current-year budget will be budgeted, will be non-budget, with the following year as an outlook. So, we're going to, yes, current-year budget will be balanced. The following year, we'll have an outlook, so you can keep track, much like you do with your extended-budget outlook. The other thing that I think was a key highlight was the spending and tax policy. We've never adopted a budget that incorporated both spending and tax. That's unique. We've always done one irrespective of the other. I think that's caused a lot of problems for us. He talked about addressing the Michigan business tax and the unfairness of it, the complicatedness nature of it, and the fact that it picks winners and losers, something that, you know, taxpayers are subsidizing. So, what you're going to see with his new corporate tax proposal are no credits, no incentives. So, that's going to go away. I know there's a lot of folks out there, particularly the movie industry, that don't want to see it go away. So, there's some debate on that. But I think Snyder's been pretty insistent that we can no longer pick winners and losers. There's going to be some, you know, difficult spending choices. I just might add that the current budget, if there are things that you don't like about it and you modify it, there's going to be other things that you're not going to like. There's just no way to balance a budget, have it be structurally sound, without any pain, just not a way to do that. We had stimulus money the last three years. We no longer have that anymore. Snyder's said, "We're not going to kick the can down the road." So, there's a lot of pain in this budget, but it should be no surprise to any of us. We knew that it was coming. PA 312, that's an area that affects you guys. You're familiar with it. It's something that we are addressing. The ability to pay is a critical component, I think, for the livelihood of a local government, and that's something I think you'll see happen. Project Labor Agreements, that's an area that we're going to address. Prevailing wage is also another area that we will be addressing. Emergency Managers, I won't, this is a very complicated bill. I'm not going to get into all the details, but some of the things out there, just to correct some of the facts, we don't want any local unit of government in school districts to go to emergency manager situation. That's bad news for everybody. It affects the credit rating of the local units. It also affects the credit rating of the state. It's not something that Snyder wants. It's not something that the legislature wants. What the hope is here is to prevent that from happening. There are certain triggers that we know that will put communities in a receivership, and the concept here is to identify those triggers, fix them before it gets into emergency manager situation. Huge piece of legislation, very complicated, a lot of debate, but we got it passed out of the House. The Senate has their version, and we'll just wait to see what we actually get to vote on, what actually comes before us from the Senate. I don't know if I have time to talk about anything. What's my time limit here? I'm certainly willing to open up for questions, too. So, Mayor, you...
Well, I think some of us have some questions, and maybe you want to address...
I can hold off right there. I mean, we have some huge challenges, and I encourage, you know, any of your thoughts and any ideas that you might have, not just yourselves, but the community as well, constituents and taxpayers.
Well, I, for one, want to challenge you on a couple of things.
Okay.
And it's not only you, but your colleagues and the governor, and that is this business of revenue sharing. I know you've heard from Mary and Rob, and you'll probably hear again from them tonight, but you also heard from the Michigan Municipal League, who represents all the communities that are members. And the word is now, is not tax revenue sharing anymore, now it's revenue stealing. We are down so far in revenue sharing, and you've seen the articles in the newspapers about the comments of some other cities and the effects that that's having on them, and that is a very serious thing. The other is the school funding. Schools were cut. I know that's not our bailiwick here, but some of us have been educators and are very aware of the kinds of things that that affects, and even in Troy schools now, it's going to affect the classrooms. They've tried to make cuts that were things that they would try to take care of, which would not be affecting the classrooms, but now Dr. Fowler's coming out and saying that the cuts are so severe now, they're going to start affecting the classrooms. That's a very serious area. The other is the recommendations that were put forward with regard seniors for pensions and on homestead property exemptions. I have to tell you, the seniors that I've talked to, that I know, they're simply outraged to think that that would be a suggestion, that businesses would get a tax break, changing the business tax, and yet trying to balance it with monies that seniors have counted on as part of their monies that they need to survive. So, I'm hoping that regardless of political party, that the legislature and the governor will look at all of those things very seriously before a budget is adopted. I do commend you and the others for looking at things earlier and for attempting to settle things earlier. I know Senator Popper George talked about that for years and years, and you have, too, about trying to make the decisions sooner, which will help cities and schools in knowing what their budgets are. However, some of the choices, in my mind, are not good choices, so I have to express that to you.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and just, I'm not here to weigh in favor of or oppose to what the governor, what the governor has proposed. I mean, we, that's something that I hope to debate in my follow-up meeting, my budget meeting, at the end of the month, where we have more time to discuss these things. And really, my job is to convey what's happening in Lansing and hopefully get the feedback from constituents here in the community. So, this is one piece of it. I had a town hall on Saturday on property taxes, and the budget proposed by Governor Snyder will address that in about a month or so. So, I welcome the citizens and the taxpayers to attend, to express their opinions, their feelings. That's the place where I think it should happen, and as far as what's going to happen, I think it's, the legislature has to, you know, debate these issues. It goes through a legislative process. It's hit budget. You put it out there, and it's up to us, you know, to debate it and to make decisions on the different pieces of it. One of the things that we have not seen, and that's the governor's proposal for the incentives that local units can take advantage of, in hopes of consolidating, not consolidating, but streamlining operations. PA 312 is one piece of it. Project Labor Agreements is another piece of it. There's a lot of different pieces that we have not even seen yet, that hopefully in the next few weeks, I have more details on that, and so, you know, "Hold your horses," I would say at this moment.
All right. Councilwoman Beltrameen, did you...
Always. No, and, you know, and I have to reflect the mayor's comments. You know, we know that people move to a city or they move to the country. They don't move to Michigan. They settle in Troy because they like it, and quite honestly, our library enclosed and our inability to create a 21st-century community that will attract people is a direct result of the $15.9 million we've lost in revenue sharing. And if we lose any more, there will be other services that will be drastically cut and limit our ability to attract, and that ultimately becomes a bigger state issue. You know that. So, now I'm done testifying. I say to you, "Fix it," and I say "fix it" because if we can't provide the places, the state will not have the revenue anyway. So, cutting us, and I appreciate the governor's incentives. I hope he will give us credit for what we have already done, in addition to the community's ability to pay in 312, and that's huge. The Urban Cooperation Act is actually a disincentive for collaboration, so those pieces have to be fixed as well. But the other thing I noticed about the governor's budget, he put most of the library funding in e-resources. And so, it seems to me, and you've heard me harp on this before, a great time to change the law, and why does a bricks-and-mortar building have to be open when some of the collection is accessible 24/7? So, if the governor shows a bent toward e-resources, can't the rest of us? And wouldn't that make it easier for us to provide services to our people? So, that's another piece of it. You know we've got the SB 34 resolution on our agenda tonight, and it is about revenue replacement. That, it's huge to us because you're taking 7% of our budget just in that.
And again, thank you for that. I mean, I think this is all good feedback, and we need to hear it. I encourage, you know, the dialogue to stay open, and, you know, you mentioned the pension, and I'm getting the same emails that you're getting, and I'm not real crazy about it. So, that's something that's going to need to be debated and discussed, and it's about a $750 million revenue stream. If we're not, if we're not going to go through with that, we have to find other places to cut. I mean, there's just no way we can get around that. So, these are all difficult decisions that we have to make, and I think you're going to find that we'll make them. You mentioned getting it done early. The goal is to get it done by June 1st. You know, I think that's from the House perspective. I think, I think, I mean, we're aimed at getting it done early.
Are there other councilmembers that have questions? Council, Mayor Pro Tem Kirwin?
Thank you very much for coming tonight, State Rep. I know that you recently held a well-attended workshop about assessment and how to kind of fight your tax assessment. I was wondering if you knew, out of our 26,000 homes, 91% of those went down in what, in what they pay.
Mine went down. It's a huge challenge, and I wish it were going up.
So...
Because if it were going up, that means my property value's worth more.
That's correct.
So, I understand the challenges that you're faced with.
So, couple that with the 40% less that was in the governor's budget, and you can see that we aren't in that place where we are closing down one service after another service after another service. It's not the place that we want to be, yet you're saying that, you know, it's a shared suffering, some suffering more than others. Since 2001, we've seen a decline in the revenue sharing, or as the mayor calls it, revenue stealing, in the shared revenue of $3.6 billion. So, although you have a $1.8 billion, was that true difference in yours?
It's like $1.4, $1.5 for the State of Michigan General Fund and the rest of it going towards schools.
So, we have had that shared suffering for a long time, just as the mayor mentioned in terms of the school district, things are really hitting the classroom now. We are seeing diminished in our, in our police, and we'll see tonight, we'll be actually acting on some of those changes that we'll see in the public safety sector that we have to implement right now. So, we again ask for you to advocate on behalf of Troy, Troy that you represent, and do your best on our behalf.
Thank you. And our choices are, we can, we can cut spending, we can increase taxes, or we can kick the can down the road. None of them are fun, and, or we can do the right thing and, you know, get our structural deficit fiscal house in order, and I think what you'll see at the end of the day is just that. We've been running a structural deficit for the last eight years, and we can't afford to do that anymore, and we don't have any outside money coming in. And in fact, in Snyder's budget, he does have money set aside to pay for future retiree healthcare costs. That's huge. That's over $25 billion of liabilities that we have not put aside.
Are there any others that wish to ask? Thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on our agenda, we have no carryover items or no public hearings this evening, and so we'll go to public comment, and as indicated in the agenda, and as we always say at each meeting, these are on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda, and the time limit for each individual will be five minutes this evening because we have two, four, six, eight, seven people that have signed up. So, I will begin by calling, I think I'll call two, and then two, and then two, okay? So, Janice Daniels and John Vert, if you would both come forward. John, you're not going to speak? Okay. All right. Thank you. Then, Richard Peters, you'll be the next speaker after Mrs. Daniels.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Janice Daniels, and I am so proud to be here tonight, knowing that I live in America, a beautiful country with the greatest representative Republican form of government that the world has ever known. I'm pleased that we are having this open discussion about our budget priorities in my opposition to the tax-and-spend majority on this council. It's good to know that the likely worst thing that'll happen to me is that certain council members and tax-and-spenders in the audience will slander my group and slander my good name. That's a small price to pay for freedom. Troy Citizens United has come forward with one idea after another for free, ideas that are mirrored in the $200,000 taxpayer-funded independent report that you made us purchase. Councilman Howrak reveals excess funds. His resolution is voted down because one of the highest-paid duplicate service members of our city management shuffled his papers around and said that the money had to be used for something else, but that something else couldn't be keeping our library open for one more year, which is a clear will of the majority. Councilwoman Beltrameen said that the multi-year budget plan is a learning experience, and you five council members are prepared to sacrifice our library because of your learning curve? Attorney Blum said that because her written exaggerations weren't dispositive, it was okay to mislead the court? Survey the citizens. What do we want? Public comments are a survey of the people. Every single person in this city has the right to come before council, month after month. They choose not to because they prefer to speak to you at the voting booth. Councilman Slater, what is it that you really want to know? You had two votes. That was your survey. What else do you think the people would say besides, "We don't want our taxes raised," or "They do want our taxes raised." "We want smaller government." "They want bigger government." "We want our library open." "We want truth in budgeting." "We want public-sector earnings packages equal to private sector." "We want you to start at the margins and work your way inward when you cut out services, not go for the jugular, which is the library." "We want across-the-board tax relief, not tax abatements for your friends and special donors." "I want you to use the excess $1.7 million of unallocated funds that were found in your budget to pay for our library." "I want you to use the $1 million that should be cut out of the top 19 earnings compensation packages to pay for our library." "For the people who are willing to pay more taxes, just go do it." "I'm willing to pay for a library card. I'm willing to do without the computer room, the bookstore, and all nonessential city services that can be found on your website." "Councilwoman Kirwin, I know you received a copy of the memo from Manager Zerlich that instructed you to vote immediately for a 1 mil increase without a vote of the people. Furthermore, the city sent out a flyer warning us of unsafe streets and lowered bond ratings. You expected us to accept that, but if something we sent out doesn't meet your interpretation of the truth, you suggest it's bogus. Your role in this council is not to denigrate citizens who believe differently than you do. I have another idea for you with regard to those seven new positions that you say you have to fill. The ICMA report stated that you have a top-heavy management structure. I suggest you take seven of the 19 overpaid top-city employees and move them into the positions that are in need of support at the wage that those positions currently offer, not at their bloated compensation packages. And if they don't like these reassignments, we would welcome them into the private sector where they can join us in the stress of having drastically reduced incomes, not being able to change our jobs, not being able to afford vacations or the gas in our cars. We aren't even ever able to have the pensions and perks that have been afforded to our public servants, and we're also aware of your generous new golden parachute retirement packages. You know what, though? I say, "Go ahead. Close the library." That move will make it all the easier for us to defeat you in your next election. Just think of the advertising. Instead of using unallocated excess money, instead of eliminating top-heavy city management, instead of using department tax budgeting, instead of demanding across-the-board compensation cuts, instead of reducing repetitive services, instead of recognizing that elections and public comments are the will of the people. Councilperson Kirwin, Slater, McGinnis, Beltrameen, and Mayor Schilling all decided to ignore the clear will of the majority of Troy taxpayers, and they closed our library. This'll be great. I'll see you in November.
We will address things after comments. I certainly have a lot to address on that one. Mr. Vert, did you wish to speak now?
Yeah, I do.
Come forward. Thank you.
I'd really like to respond to the lady who just addressed you.
Feel free to adjust the microphone if you like. No, you can move it up.
Okay.
You don't have to stoop.
I don't have to stoop?
No.
My belly gets in the way if I stoop too much anyhow. You know, one of the things that I was upset about, one of the reasons I came here tonight, was because of the suggestion or proposal that was made by Councilman Fleming and Mr. Howrak about using, taking money out of the pension funds. It's exactly what General Motors did, and now they're on the hook for billions of dollars. It's exactly what Governor Angler did to the state of Michigan, and we've been paying for it ever since, and now there's people here who want to try it here, and I guess maybe there's people that are much more intelligent and know how to do that and keep things alive than the rest of us. I don't know who those people are. I don't know who those people are. I haven't met any geniuses in here. But that's all I really have to say.
Okay, Mr. Peters, you're up next. And then after Mr. Peters, it'll be Paul Beck. Come forward, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Happy February 28th. I was thinking this over, and I don't know if you can have a consumption tax in this town, but I think some of these foods at these fast food places and these restaurants sell are, you know, they're sugar and heart and cancer and all this stuff. Might be something you consider. Herbert Hoover, you know, he believed that you should balance the budgets in the time of a recession. And he believed that for four years. Now sometime, I think they should probably try to waive some of these laws, or at least in my mind, maybe they should legalize soft drugs and decriminalize the hard ones, instead of building jails and polarizing cities versus suburbs and, you know, whatever else goes on there. Those would be some of my solutions to the budget impasse here that we have. And maybe that you could have a, instead of a full mill, a half mill. Because after all, property rates are going down. And that, to me, would help our thing here. As far as, I want to talk a little bit about Libya just for a second. I know the United States is getting, I don't know, the president, you know, he's the leader of the free world, and I don't know if he's going to go in there or not. But what I would suggest maybe is that if they do, it should go in under the United Nations and let an Arab, an OAU, or an African unity force go in there and help the Arab citizens in that country. And if there's a no-fly zone, let it be under the United Nations with the Russian, Chinese, American, and European aspect to it, so that we, if we do something like that, that it would be, have a broad-based approach to it. And I guess that's about it. Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Beck, you're next. And after Mr. Beck, it'll be Jim Savage. Good evening.
Good evening. Basically, the first lady took all my thunder. But I'd just like to get involved with a couple of things here. Is that we're cutting the library. And it was your decision and the city manager's decision to do it. But I think we should have thought seriously about cutting other things, like the Aqua Center that we don't need. It's only opened three and a half months out of the year. The other thing is the Transit Center. We spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, and we don't even have title to the land that we dumped into that. And then the, the other thing is the downtown development managers. They just made a mess of Big Beaver. And the benefit packages that we give out to our employees is just too high. And that's all I'm going to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Savage, you're next. And after Mr. Savage, it'll be Dale Christensen. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, city council. And, okay, for months, all the focus has been on the library. And I, like the residents of Troy, believe that a library is essential to a community. But I believe the library has been used to distract residents from the real issue, which is the wasteful spending of taxpayer money. And where does the library stand in the administration's list of priorities? You have stated you will close the library. But as I recall, you have not stated that you will stop funding the DDA. Because all we have on Big Beaver, and I live near there, is more and more for leasing for sale signs. And that has happened since the DDA started. They weren't there before the DDA. Or the, you haven't said that you will stop funding the Transit Center, or that you would constrain consultant fees. No, you have cut the workforce, hitting first the people who can least afford it. Now, some council members and a few residents seem to think that Mr. Horlak is the problem. The problems were here before Mr. Horlak, and I go back many years, and I was at these meetings before Mr. Horlak was even elected. The dissatisfaction of residents showed up way back when it became apparent that the management were moving Troy in a direction the people did not want to go. The voters of Troy have not trusted city management for many years. A few years ago, the city spent months and months and tens of thousands, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars promoting the I-75 Long Lake interchange, at a cost to taxpayers of over $40 million. Meanwhile, the potholes on John R. and other city streets were swallowed up cars. Where were the priorities then? As I recall, the management pushed so hard for the interchange was because they had assured the office complex developers easy access to I-75. Well, those office complexes are over half-empty now, so it was not needed. When we had the money, we should have taken care of our infrastructure, such as the roads and everything that needed taking care of. But no, we didn't. We were talking about the interchange, we were talking about other expensive projects that we didn't want, and we didn't get anyhow. And it's just about a year since the Troy residents voted two to one against the tax increase. They stopped blaming the residents. They weren't voting about the library. It had nothing to do with the library because they do not trust the city government. Because the residents believed that if they voted more taxes, you're going to blow it on stuff they don't want anyhow. And it's about time we started holding the people accountable for these things and make them accountable, who are responsible. Now, we've also heard comments about employees' pays, pension, and benefits. And they've been blamed for a lot of our financial woes. And as I recall, we kind of live in a selfish society. We all want to look after ourselves. And a worker is going to try to get the most for his work as he can. That isn't, that's natural. And the union representatives, their job is to try to get as much for their members as they can. And that's what he's supposed to do. But who negotiated the contract for the residents? That's where the problem is. If they've got too much money or too much pension and so on, I don't know. But if, if that's the problem, then somebody did not do their job for the residents in the contract negotiations. Thank you.
And next, we'll hear from Dale Christensen and then from Dan Brake. Good evening, Mr. Christensen.
Good evening, thank you, mayor. My name is Dale Christensen. My family and I have been residents for Troy for over 20 years. Let me take you back 20 years ago. The Troy School Board, at that time, faced a tough decision. It was a real vitriolic debate, a new Troy High or not. Many of us remember it. I was a little younger then, we all were. The Troy Board of Education showed courage and pushed for a new Troy High over heated opposition. Some were not, were not re-elected. At least, that's the way I remember it. That group of public officials made the right choice. I reckon even today, they still think they did. The result of that is we now have two modern exemplary high schools for every student in the Troy School District. Today, no one talks about the old arguments. They're long forgotten. We don't remember the board winners or losers, or who scored the most debating points. 20 years later, everyone is happy with the results of the courageous decision the Troy Board of Education made. So now you city council members, you've got a similar opportunity to rise to the occasion and create a legacy for yourselves and the city. Are you willing to seize it? You can choose to do the easy thing. You can choose to back down to the reactionary political and budgetary shenanigans, even in the ballot box, that confuse Troy voters and hurt this city. You can choose to be the city council that allowed the Troy library to die. That's the legacy, my respective council members, you have facing you. If you choose to let it happen. Or you can show courage, as the Troy Board of Education did 20 years ago, and choose the right, long-term choice and save the library. As your staff has pointed out, you have an option. Are you willing to choose to pursue it in the face of opposition? Are you willing to do the right thing at the risk of your own reelection? Sounds like you're going to be facing it anyway, even if you don't implement the one-mill increase. So pursuant to Michigan Public Act 164, I urge you to implement the one-mill increase allowed by Michigan law. Save the library. Rise above the partisan bickering. Frankly, it's an embarrassment. You did not ask for this difficult choice. The causes are complex and far-reaching, and to a great extent, outside of our control. But you did ask for the opportunity and associated responsibility to sit in that chair when these tough decisions are necessary. Don't be the public officials that are talked about 20 years from now, who had the chance to do the right thing and chose instead to do the easy thing and let the library die. Seize the moment to create the legacy that you want. Make it a positive legacy. Be the public officials who saved the library and retained one of the city jewels. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Mr. Brake, you're next.
I prepared extra copies of my remarks. Do you have any others?
Mr. Brake? Please address the...
Thank you, ma'am.
Counsel, thank you.
I left my reading glasses at home, I find, so I may struggle with my notes at some points. I've titled my remarks tonight Lawlessness and Lies at Troy City Hall. You can trust me on this because these are the facts. You want to spend $22,000 of my scarce, difficult-to-pay property tax dollars on a survey to find out why the people of Troy don't trust you, don't believe you, and are having a hard time taking you seriously? Well, let me hold up a mirror. Let's start with a year ago. You told us that you needed a tax increase. But oh, no, not to worry. It really wasn't a tax increase, it was a tax decrease that you're asking us to vote for. One of you took until the meeting here last week to finally agree that 1.9 mils divided by the existing 6.5 mils was really a 29% increase in our property taxes. Or did you? Let's see. Peer into the magic mirror. Oh, yes, we see you telling us that it was never a 29% tax increase. But then when Councilman Horlak confronts you with the question of what is 1.9 divided by 6.5, you instantly switch to talking about a very generous 29% tip added onto a $3 check at Pudge's Restaurant, which really isn't anything at all, you said. And yet we taxpayers are supposed to take your word for it, that a 29% tip added onto $1,000, say, of city property tax that we already might be paying is just nothing at all. We're not to worry, because everyone around us in other towns nearby is already forced to pay even more. Let's stick with last year for a moment. There's the idea of the whole budget, the budget where the library's portion totally disappeared, while at the same time, the police department budget increased by an amount in one year greater than the whole library budget. Wow. In the same budget last May, you tell the people that we can no longer afford our community center. And days later, the public points out to you that your own budget records show that the community center is 96% self-funded. Didn't get away with that one, did you? Wow. In the same budget, you cancel Troy Days because we can no longer afford its net $8,000 cost in a total $58 million budget. Later, when I'm told the Troy Days originators try to sponsor this event on their own, your city employees tell us they'll have to pay a handsome royalty to the city in order to use their very own Troy Days name. Wow. How's the mirror looking? In an aborted attempt to use the 1877 State Library law, along with a new tax and a new government, you asked for over $4 million, when the existing library budget is less than $2.3 million. Wow. The Ed Kempen petition, successfully submitted with more than enough signatures, you say, "Oh, no, we're not going to honor the city charter, our constitution. We're going to take you to court." I have so much material, I'm going to have to skip some of it. January 19th of this year, this is the fourth time I'm bringing up what you said in a court document filed under oath. One-third of the city police department will be have to lay it off if we keep the library open at its present rate. I'll bring it up again next week if you're not prepared to respond this evening. The court in that decision said, "This court finds that the proposed initiative would impair the efficient administration of the municipality, and therefore concludes that it is not legislative." So this judge thinks that the standard for a citizen's petition is that it must impair the efficient administration of the municipality. Can one not help but wonder that she must have had in her mind the layoff of one-third of the city's police force when she wrote that sentence? Wow. I've already mentioned the special meeting on February 7th, mayor, where you stole three minutes and 50 seconds of my time by illegally denying me the five minutes I was entitled to under the State Open Meetings Act and under your own council rules. Wow. At that meeting, along with the lie about the one-third of the police force that I just mentioned, I also pointed out that Ed Kempen was unable to respond to this lie in the February 2 court hearing because you violated by five business days the Michigan Freedom of Information Act's requirements for maximum response times in providing budget information that I had requested, so that I only received it at 3:30 in the afternoon before his court hearing. The court hearing at which your city attorney then objected that she had not been provided the opportunity to review Ed's budget information in advance. Wow. Still looking in the mirror? Your own library advisory board, yep. This is a board appointed by you and responsible to you per the city's own code, the city's laws, Section 9 Library Ordinance, to provide you and the people an alternative view to the city manager's recommendations. Along with other provisions, the code requires that the library advisory board must each year by February 15th submit to the city manager its recommendations for the upcoming year's budget. When I visited the library on February 9th, a notice was posted that this month's meeting was canceled for the lack of a quorum. I already knew from their minutes that they hadn't taken up the budget yet, so I asked at the main desk for a member of management. A young man appeared, and when I explained my concern that the LIB was not meeting but was required to act on the budget, he offered to ask the library director to speak with me. She did. She told me that Mr. Lamorato forbid her to submit a budget recommendation for this year. And there's three or four more. Maybe I can come back to them next week.
I had your five, five minutes, thank you. That concludes those that signed up to speak on their public comment. And before other council members or staff, if they wish to respond, our next section is response or reply to public comment. Let me begin. There were so many errors, misinformation, and mistruths in many of the comments that were made tonight that we have responded to, I would say, at least... were made tonight that we have responded to, I would say, at least 20 times. The most blatant is about the money that is in the undesigned, unallocated funds. And so I will repeat again that those monies, as suggested that they be used for the library, are designated in the budgets for 2012 and 2013. That has been mentioned over and over and over and over. The other thing that's mentioned over and over again is, why don't we use the Transit Center money? After all, that's millions. The millions is federal money that is designated for transportation funds. It cannot be transferred and used for the library. Many of the suggestions that people have made over and over again are things that cannot be done. The matter of the council voting under the 1877 law, one mil for the library, for an independent library, is for one year. It is not a sustained, it would have to be voted on again one year, then the next year, and the next year. The council members did not choose to go that route because it is not long-term sustained, sustainable funds for our public library. The decisions that this council has made and talked about for this year and the year previous have been difficult decisions, but necessary because we must have a balanced budget, plus we must provide for our core services first and foremost, and that is police and fire infrastructure, which includes our roads. For people that were upset with council, when it snowed and we didn't plow to the 24-hour standard that we used to plow to, we sent out information indicating that we changed our standard to that that the county uses for their roads because we only had so much money for road plowing and salting this year, and we wanted it to last over the entire season, being that this has been the second snowiest February ever. And we still, as you know, get snow in March. We were trying to have the funds out there so that we could do the clearing in appropriate manner. Many of the roads that the city of Troy employees are plowing under contract with the county, many of our main roads, will be returned to the county for their maintenance next year. We will not be doing that with them, and therefore, they will have even lower service on those main roads. So for all these suggestions about the fact that we are mismanaged, overspending, and being exorbitant, I contend, look at the facts and the numbers. Look at the tax rate that the city of Troy has had these many years, the lowest rate, and the fact that valuations have fallen. And for those that say, why are all the office buildings having signs up about vacancies, their rates, their valuation also has been falling and is continuing to fall until 2014, when rates will begin to raise very slowly till 2028. Then we'll be back to 2008 levels. So when you look at all these numbers together and look at the situation we're in, these difficult decisions have had to be made. And for those that continually come and repeat the same thing to council, and we repeat the same answer back, I hope that they will listen to the answers and look at the data. Much of it is on our city website and is in documented evidence. Other council members that want to respond at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltzmini.
I want to respond both to the public and to something you said. We talk about the three-year budget, and we got the update, and we got the recommendation from staff about how the fund balance needed to be reallocated in the future budgets. But as was the case last week, when Mayor Protem Kerwin said, "But the standing resolution is the one that closes the library." The standing resolution is the one that shows $1.7 million in extra fund balance this year, and if council's expected to reappropriate that, we need a resolution to do that and get this discussion decided one way or another. And I would recommend that as we make updates throughout the year in future times, that the update be given to us as a report and communication. We have a study session on it, and then at the next meeting, it comes back with whatever council decides at the study session, because this discussion has now gone on for three months, and we could have not had that. So I would just like to recommend that, and I hope my colleagues would agree.
Others that want to respond? Mayor Protem Kerwin.
Really, more of the same from both, frankly. Some who spoke tonight speak at many of our meetings, and that's why I do agree. We're really, the library comes out of general fund. By now, you've been to so many meetings, yet the pouring of money together is something that Troy Citizens United likes to do. We could just pour the pansies from Big Beaver, and then we would be able to preserve our library. That's when there's the talk about the DDA. DDA is specific funding, it's not part of the general fund. The DDA captures taxes, which otherwise would not be able to stay here in the city and can only be used in a designated area. Those DDA funds can never be used to preserve the library. Again, a mention about the Aquatic Center. That comes out of what's called the enterprise funds, those that can in fact make money. That's not general fund either. There was talk, again, as you mentioned, the Transit Center, that thousands of money... No, that money was set aside long ago. There's no money from the general fund going in there. Those are all set-asides, separate dollars. They cannot be poured in to preserve the library. Another question from a frequent speaker was, "Why didn't we fix those roads when times were good?" We rolled back the millage. That's how the millage has not only stayed 9.2, go back, year after year after year. When times were good, what did the council do? They rolled back the millage so that people would have the dollars in their pockets. Was that a good move? I don't know. But this, again, council was responsive to, "Let's not use more money than in fact we need." That addresses a few of those things. Finally, there was never before this body, ever, talk about making an independent library. The independent library came as an idea from friends, friends of the Troy Public Library, who worked and said, "What can we do as an organization? What can we do to preserve the library?" And looking at the 1877 law, they said, "One thing might be is to establish an independent library. One way to do that is to have a petition." That petition came forward, along with three copycat petitions, and then the petition for the Friends of Ed Kempen for no new taxes, which would do it, and all of that was poured together. That's one way to form an independent library. All of those were defeated. This council never, as part of any agenda item, brought before us for action something to do with an independent library. We have talked about the Troy Public Library we have. The one mil that the speaker tonight spoke of would be to establish an independent library. The funding, as the mayor spoke, would be one year and on a budget before the council again. That would not be the Troy Public Library that we have now. That is not the preserved funds that would maintain that. That would be triggering an independent library, and at the will of the next council in November, whatever funding there would be for that would be for that. It's not the long-term, sustainable solution. Man again spoke in terms of next November, what will happen. You're looking at some 70 years of elected and appointed service that won't be here. What will be left is 10 years of elected service. That's the result of term limits. So when people talk about, wow, just wait until November, wait until November. Term limits have hit. What will be the reality for this council is you'll have less experience than we've ever seen on an elected body. And the state rep who was just here talked about the impact of term limits on all levels. That institutional memory, the training, the knowledge of what these different groups of money means matters in a legally enforceable way, and I don't think people realize that. But for those of you who attend meeting after meeting after meeting, I know you know the difference in these funds by now. And to pour them in, as is the want of Troy Citizens United, to act like, boy, aren't these people just a bunch of fools that they can't put together all of these monies? We can't because of our legal obligations under the law. That's the truth. It's an unhappy truth for many of you. It has nothing to do with courage. Believe me, the courage it takes to come to these meetings every Monday night and do our best dealing with the numbers that we are looking at is a great deal of courage. Thank you.
Any other council members that wish to respond to public comment? Councilwoman McGinnis?
There's just one point of clarification that I think should be made as well, because I had taken some notes to point out. There was a comment made about the Golden Parachute Retirement Program, and I think that just in terms of trying to straighten out the facts here, it should be pointed out that I'm assuming that's referring to the eRIP program that we just spent quite a bit of time discussing and formulating and approving as an incentive program to move some of the employees that may not otherwise choose to leave the city, that we will be paying, obviously, their salaries and their benefits as well. And I think the fact that was forgotten in the discussion of the Golden Parachute is that the only way that this program was going to work for us was if it was cost-neutral. So each person that determines that they're interested in this program has to be deemed eligible, and then the numbers for each individual person has to be worked out to determine that it is cost-neutral to us. So that's not an additional cost that we're tacking into what we're doing, and I just thought that that should be clarified.
Thank you. Any others? Then we'll go on with our postponed items. The first one is H1, which is a directive from city council for city administration to provide business and organization recommendations to conduct a community survey. There is a memo on this, which was part of the public information for the meeting and for council members, and there's a resolution here at the table. Someone want to bring forward a resolution or to amend the resolution that is before us, because the memo is indicating that three firms were contacted, and there's a recommendation for, it is item I-8, if you're looking for it in your agenda, council members? Memo? Madam Mayor. Yes. Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Are we, is the suggestion that we offer a substitute resolution, because I think that...
There is no other resolution suggested, but I'm just bringing that up because the resolution said, "Direct city administration to provide city council with three business organization recommendations for conducting a statistically significant community survey." And all I'm saying is, if we want to pass that resolution, or did we want to change it based on the memo that is there under I-8? I don't know, I'm asking. Councilwoman Beltzmini?
Question for the clerk. Could the resolution that is suggested for item I-8 be substituted in this case at this point?
The council could, they do have that option to amend by substitution, where you can postpone indefinitely and then deal with the matter under I-8, either way.
Councilwoman Beltzmini?
I don't like what postponing indefinitely does to a paper trail.
I just, I kind of have a problem with that, so...
I would support the substitution.
I would, before I do that, I have a question for management, though. If that's the direction we're going in, it may be out of order, but I'm going to ask it anyway.
That will help us formulate a better resolution.
Mr. Zerlik, I noticed in your memo that it says that this survey would have to be paid by a budget amendment, and I'm a little concerned about that. And I am wondering if, given the retirements, the cost savings, and those things, if this could be paid out of existing funds in this year's budget instead?
The short answer is yes. I'll get with Mr. Lamorato, and we'll find the funding.
Thank you.
Since the resolution is on the table, moved by Councilwoman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, as it is worded here, then we're going to put forward a substitute resolution instead of the one that is here? Is that your plan?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltzmini?
I would move to substitute the resolution with the following. Whereas city administration was directed to provide city council with three business or organization recommendations for conducting a statistically significant community survey, and whereas the analysis will assist city council and management to ascertain citizens' acceptable level of service in each of the core services and the specific services citizens are willing or willing, not willing, to pay for, therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby awards a contract to provide a telephone survey and analysis, no, a telephone survey and a community report card on city services to target inside of Lansing, Michigan for a not-to-exceed cost of $22,000.
Do we have a second?
Support. Question, did it include...
Moved by Councilwoman Beltz, Councilwoman Beltzmini, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin. Discussion, Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Did that omit, and full analysis?
It did.
I'm interested in your thought on that.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beltzmini?
I know that staff discussed with the various corporations what an analysis would entail. If we want, and what we say we want is the citizens' level of acceptable service, that takes no analysis, that's a tabulation. And I believe that particularly knowing that the people who do this in the public government arena, from time to time, also are asked to do political surveys. I don't want to get into an analysis that could be misconstrued. I want a tabulation that tells us what our citizens think and let us figure out what to do with that. So I specifically omitted that, and I expect that that will bring down the cost as well a little bit.
Does that respond to your question, Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Beltzmini, for putting that in. Suppose, we just heard tonight many people telling us what the votes meant. And we hear this every Monday night. This is what the vote really meant, what the vote really meant was, we're poor, or what the vote really meant was, we don't trust you, or what the vote really meant was this. This is the reason we voted. No. I'm actually kind of interested in a drill down of what it really means. And so far, it has been kind of random. It goes according to what a certain viewpoint is. It was the wrong amount, it was the wrong time, it was the wrong this or wrong that. And if that full analysis supplies that, that's really the reason for this. The randomness of the dialogue that we, or the monologue in some cases of what we hear, is what's left that kind of question mark on what is it? We know that folks from emails we receive and from people we encounter want streets that are snow-free. They liked the 24-hour standard a lot. They still expect that 24-hour standard. I really want to know if they're willing to pay for that 24-hour, you know, what the amount is, including if it's a millage. And that language, I don't know whether it needs to be in this resolution to include that, but that's what I am really...
that, but that's what I am really interested in, is what would you give out of your pocket to have that snow removal that you used to have and that you say that you liked? Because at this point, going forward, it's not there, and we know it.
I think the resolution as presented still allows for that.
For a question?
For that tabulation. It does still say, what are you willing to pay for? And if you're willing to pay for it, it needs to be how much? That's a tabulation. That's not an analysis, in my mind. And I would expect that we would ask those questions in this.
And so, Madam Mayor, my question would be for the city manager in regards to the question on the actual cost, and would you pay X amount of dollars? Does this resolution then give you the authority to do that?
Mr. Zerlik?
This resolution gives me the authority to enter into a contract to conduct a survey. I don't think you'll want to see the survey questions. You'll have a general charge of determining, you know, in his professional view, what types of questions to ask to get a sense of what the residents want and what they don't want, and what they're willing to pay for and not pay for. If you want to define that as a tabulation, we'll so advise. I agree that the term "tabulation" and "analysis" could be redundant.
Further questions? Any other council members on the resolution? You've substituted the resolution from I-8 over to H1?
I did.
Yes. Did I see a signal from you? Yes. Councilman Fleming?
I'm just struggling with this survey, and the public is going to interpret this survey. Are they going to trust the results? And probably not. A certain segment of the public's not going to trust the results. I don't know how we can do a survey that we, as a council, are very confident gets a good cross-section of the public. I'm very concerned that we get that, we get, if we're going to spend the money to do this, that we get a good cross-section. And without knowing the questions, without understanding exactly how it's going to be done, and I've read the report, I don't know how I can be reassured that the results we get and the actions we take are really going to be trusted by the citizens.
I'd like to speak to the three companies that were both approached on this. All have done extensive statistically significant scientific surveys where the information that they can extrapolate out to a larger number. And they have done, that is their expertise, and that is the reason why these three specifically were looked at, because their data has been reliable and responsible. That is their reputation. I think that there are some other kinds of community conversations that we're planning to do, where we'll gain information in addition. But I think that this type of thing has a way of providing information that is necessary. I don't know if others would like to speak on behalf of that, or not. Councilwoman Slater?
Mayor, thanks. This was my suggestion, and I, as much as I wouldn't, I don't want to pay anymore for anything, you do, there is a cost associated with something like this. And I think, once again, I've said this before, there are times when you have to rely on experts to tell you things. As much as I like to read emails and listen to people, the experts at this are better at telling me what the citizens want. So I have to support that.
Other further questions on the substitute resolution? Our comments? Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, you indicated this was going to be one component, I believe, surmising what you said, for decision-making process. The other, we'd be doing other things, like meetings. What's really planned?
Well, we talked in our study session last time, and I think that the suggestion is that we continue that discussion. There's something in front of us about doing a calendar, you know, of when we could meet. There are various kinds of things. In fact, in the ICMA report, they suggested that we gather information periodically. And I had said, there's always, you know, the water bill where we can send out something, but of course, not everybody gets a water bill. And, because if you live in a condo, the condo association actually gets them rather than each of the individuals. But most people get their, you know, get their own quarterly water bill. So there can be something that's put in there, and people that choose to send that back can do that with information. There also is a suggestion box that's right outside that's there. There's also something on the...
Our webpage.
City webpage, that is a suggestion section where you can go in and put in information. So I think it's important for us to gather information, and from what I know of these three companies that were suggested, I would have been comfortable with any of the three, They are reliable, and they have a track record of providing reliable information and doing it, you know, in an objective way. It's not us, we're not calling and asking the people the information. It's, you know, they're doing it with their system as they have. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
And I just wanted to point out, too, doing a little bit of research and seeing how we compare to other communities, both in the state of Michigan and outside of Michigan, this is the one thing that I would be willing to admit, that we might be a little bit behind the times. And I know some people have said, when they're calling and they're upset because they don't understand how the survey will work, and they don't understand how we're going to utilize the results. Yes, there are communities that have been doing this for a long time, where it's that whole cycle of continual improvement, where they've got it set up, it'll go through different departments in their city, and they're constantly asking for feedback. And that's probably putting them in a better position, because they don't have to start from scratch with these kinds of results. But there are a lot of other communities that are doing this specifically for this reason. I spent a lot of time searching far and wide to kind of get some factual basis on how I can present this to the people that live in the community as to why we're doing this. And there's a lot of communities that have come right out and put together budget challenge surveys, and specifically questions that are relating to budget, budget crisis, what services can you live with, and what services can you live without. So I don't necessarily even think this is a knee-jerk reaction. I'm hoping that this starts something that will lead into what we will hopefully be doing for continual improvement in terms of all of our departments. But right now, this is one tool that we need to have to get public input. In another sense, I've heard some people say, well, you already got our input with futures. And God, if we were still in that timeframe, things would be a lot different. But I don't think that I would be doing my job correctly if I relied on that information to make the kind of decisions that I need to make now. So that's why I think that this is very important. And I think that when we're presented with the information, they're going to have to provide, much like our actuary has to provide, all the background statistical information so that we can feel comfortable with the recommendations. The same will apply here. This isn't going to be something that just gets sprung on us, and oh, here's what people said, and hopefully you guys can do something with this information. It is going to be a process, and I think we need to start that process right away. So I will be supporting this, along with any other things that we're going to be discussing about how to continue to reach out and have our finger on the pulse of the community, which sometimes seems like it's changing every day. So that's why I'll be voting yes in support of this.
Further discussion of the motion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, on the substitute motion?
Councilmember Bell, to me?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes.
Madam Mayor?
Wait, we have one more?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I want a substitute, you know, we have to do two. Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell, to me?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Responding really to Councilmember Fleming's interest in the other strategies, I'm hoping I would have support to suspend the rules and add O session on strategies and so on. So, but it would take a suspension of rules in order to do that. Anybody?
Are you going to do that at this point, or you want to wait till we...
We can do it at any time. I thought now would be appropriate, because he just brought it up. Move to suspend the rules?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Bell, to me, that we suspend the rules at this point. Mrs. Bartholomew? Oh, discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, on the suspension?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell, to me?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I move that we add O1, study item, strategies for public engagement, and follow-up to ICMA Part 1.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Bell, to me, that we add O1, study item, for this evening, after the regular meeting is finished.
Madam Mayor?
For the items so discussed. You added in two things. Would you like to clarify that?
I did.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
We had, we've had something dangling for a while, and it's becoming a concern. I think when Councilmember Bell, to me, mentioned that 1.7 and so on, we have been talking about the 5 plus 2, the seven positions. If we, I wanted to have an all-inclusive so that, should we be able to finish our discussion of public engagement strategies, that we could go ahead and give some direction. We're coming up to budget on the 7 plus 2 or anything else from Part 1. Originally, the manager had suggested, oh, just wait until we have Part 1 and Part 2. Well, we now see that Part 2 won't be for some time, but we are coming up to budget. So I simply added it there so we'd have the ability to address that if there's time available. If not, then we'll have to do it another time.
Actually, I had suggested that we wait until the two things. And, because he has to take direction from us on what we were doing. And, yes, there is an item memo that came, that we're going to have, the second section of the ICMA report would be available for the 21st.
So that's okay?
Well, there were three dates suggested, and so I don't know if we want to have that after we vote on this item, if we want to have a change on the meeting. We already have a meeting scheduled for the 21st, but we would make it a special meeting. Okay, how about the, yes, Councilwoman Slater?
So we want to have a study item tonight, is that correct? What are we doing with the 7th meeting, is my question? Are we canceling that, potentially?
Could I suggest that we vote on this?
Well, this...
About the study item, and then make a determinate, oh, you're thinking the study item could be the 7th?
Right. Instead of doing it tonight, if we still want to meet on the 7th.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
This meeting is short, and I think that with the time allotted, it would be wise to sit and talk about strategies. The council member just had a question about some of our public engagement strategies. I don't see any advantage to waiting a week and seeing what happens on the 7th. Let's just go in and see what we can talk about in the study session and crank it out tonight. I think we need to, as a council, begin to use those study sessions to talk with each other about what we're going to do.
Mayor?
And Councilwoman Slater?
I don't have any problem with that, as long as we can cancel the meeting on the 7th.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Let's vote on the studies item, I'm just clarifying. And then we need a separate resolution on the, for the 7th. I was going to bring that up, based on the memo that's there, okay? Because we can't do it all within this motion. I think we have to, Mrs. Bartholomew, we have to have a separate resolution. Don't wait for the canceling of the meeting and then on the 21st for the, it's scheduled as a regular meeting, and if we wanted to make it be a study meeting?
Typically, we try to get them divided into two motions, but it is really the up to council on how to do it.
I think it's cleaner to just do one and then go to the next. Okay. So the vote on the adding the O1, the study item, this evening?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell, to me?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. While the rules are already suspended, do we have to suspend the rules again, Mrs. Bartholomew? Or because we're, if we have another resolution now?
You really should, because the question was asked pertaining to one particular agenda item.
Madam Mayor, could we go through L? Because on L, I think that we may...